I'll take it. Congressman Fan, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I gave everybody a call tonight's Planning Commission meeting to order, and we will start with an indication and a pledge of allegiance. Albert, if you would bless our meeting, and Mr. Thompson, if you would do the pledge, please.
Let us bow our gracious honor. We bow before you, thanking you for this day, for the many blessings you have graciously bestowed upon us. We thank you for watching over our community, and that's why we ask you to watch over this meeting, that we do the things you find pleasing in your sight for the citizens to which we represent. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Marion, would you please call the roll?
Chair Harris.
Here.
Vice Chair Morrell.
Here.
Mr. Perrier.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Fan.
Here.
Mr. Stroud.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Thank you. And, Mr. Secretary, do we have minutes from the January meeting?
Yes, I have minutes dated January 6th from the Planning Commission work session meeting, and minutes dated January 27th from the regular agenda meeting. And I make a motion that we approve the minutes with no changes.
On the minutes from January 6th.
Yes, sir.
I think on item number five, about the third paragraph now, it has a mister, and it has the name of the person who addressed the... On the minutes from January 6th, if you look at about the, I think, item five, and I think there's a paragraph there where it just has mister, and had the gentleman's last name.
Mr. Blank said the sign will be lit at night.
Right.
Mr. Blank.
Thank you.
Thank you, Albert. Any other corrections? And did I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, for approval of the minutes with that one correction. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is public comment on agenda-related items. So this time, I will open public comment, or something you wish to speak on that's on tonight's agenda. Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Great. Pascal Jovens, 1335 Longo Park in Gallatin City Council, District 3. I've been asked by some of my constituents to come and talk to you because they cannot come into the 5:00 p.m. It's kind of complicated for people who works to be able to attend. But Lock 4, they were kind of surprised about what's going on there, including the fire access, the temporary fire access, and why it's coming there, and why that was not talked before at any council. And suddenly it's coming there, so I kind of agree with them. When that got approved, the idea was that we would build a road from the top to the bottom to connect everything, and that temporary access road was never mentioned at all. And I don't know if you guys went there after the last tornado, but it was kind of really interesting that we're going to put a temporary fire emergency road at the same exact point where the tornado hit at the last time. And all the people I talked to who have been living in this area, they called that tornado alley for a reason. And again, I don't know if you went there after the last tornado, but that was. And I can assure you, that's not the space or the place you want to put an emergency access road, because I remember and have pictures, so I can send them to you if you want them, of the power line and the power tower there with the high lines, who were bent on the ground like a piece of straw. So, you know, again, why that was not discussed at the council level before I come in front of you. And second, that's probably not the spot you want to put one there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on public comment on agenda-related items? All right, so you know anyone wishing to speak? We'll close public comment on the agenda items and move to consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any member of the commission or staff wishes to remove, replace on the regular agenda?
The applicant has requested to remove number four on the consent agenda and put it on the regular agenda.
All right, we will do that. So the consent agenda will be items one through three. And I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items one through three.
Second.
All right, first and a second. By CJ, any questions about any of those items? I see none. A call for the vote. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, passes unanimously. All right, well, that will move us on to item four, which is Resolution Number 2025-011, the banks at Lock 4 Phase 2 preliminary plat.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kimberly Atley, Staff Planner. This is Banks, Phase 2, preliminary plat, 72 single-family lots. I was taking off the agenda, the consent agenda, so we can change the fire access. And this was for the fire access that was approved on the FMDP. It was a 20-foot-wide temporary fire access connecting to Phase 2 on Peach Street, or Peach Valley Road, prior to the building permits. We made a little adjustments. We did talk to the applicant, and it came up with an agreement for the condition four. There are 11 conditions, and this would be the condition four. And I will get to that. This is the 20-foot temporary fire access. So, conditional four has changed on ours to read, "The 20-foot-wide temporary fire access drive off Peach Valley Road is required to be functional and fire code compliant before building permits are issued in Phase 2. If another access point is constructed that satisfies the need for the fire access prior to the connection to Peach Valley Road, that is acceptable to planning and the fire department, this condition may be waived at the discretion of the city planner." So, the reason being is Nichols subdivision, which is north of there, they are also developing, same engineer, different owners, and they feel like their timeline might line up to where they might be able to access the Nicholas, or I'm sorry, Nichols Lane to the north.
Thank you. And do we have a representative for the applicant? While he's coming up. Marion, do you have the language for the change in that condition?
Yeah.
Okay, because I can't write that fast. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Brad Snyder, CSDG. We agree with all the conditions, and then the revised condition number four, that language, explained. Nichols West may come, it's all based on timing. So, if that comes online, that's going to be a closer, easier access for all parties, fire department and the developer.
Sounds like a good solution to me.
Likewise.
I was going to defer to the engineer on the question.
I mean, the more connectivity to the project, the better, in my opinion. Especially for fire access.
Okay. I don't, yeah, I think it's fine, so I don't have anything else to add to it. I'll entertain a motion to approve it. All right, so motion by Albert with the 11 conditions, including the restated fourth. Yes, okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Thanks. First and a second. So, to approve item four with the 11 conditions of approval, including the redrafted condition four that was read. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item five is Resolution 2025-003, 519 Redstone Drive Detached Garage Site Plan.
Good evening, Commissioners. Charlie Pierri, Staff Planner. The owner and applicant is requesting approval of a site plan for a 960-square-foot accessory structure with alternative architecture on a half-acre lot zoned R15 medium-density residential located 519 Redstone Drive. The applicant has addressed all of the staff's comments regarding the building separation and being out of the PUD along the backside of the property. There is still some stormwater-related issues that the applicant will come and talk about with engineering. With that being said, planning staff recommend denial of Resolution 2025-003 due to the architecture not meeting code requirements.
All right, thank you. Do you have a representative for the applicant?
Austin Christian, 660 Cole Street Road, Gallatin, Tennessee. First, I want to start with thanking you guys for y'all's recommendation at the last meeting to defer this for the condition on the stormwater situation. I've spent the last several weeks trying to work through this with multiple people in stormwater, Ryan, Nick. Those are actually the only two. One in-person meeting with Ryan, one phone call that lasted about 30 to 45 minutes with Nick. The condition that's set right now, after multiple conversations, I'm being told from the stormwater department that they're in a season of change with regulations as it relates to stormwater, and this is something that they're trying to essentially get a grasp on, from what I'm understanding. Which my response to that was, if you don't have set regulations, or set rules, or set things that require certain things as we go along this, you can't just leave it up to us to just figure it out along the way. So, you know, his response to that at the end of the day was, "We're going to leave the condition on there, but we're going to essentially look the other way." And... To put me in that position, to go out and now build this structure with a condition that's on there, you know, who's to say when I go to get my CO on this, that they say, "Oh, you've got to do this, this, and this, and this to meet this condition that was on the building permit." As you may notice, I don't know if y'all can see my resubmital, I put in big red letters, "N.A. Over the Condition." My request on this, well, first of all, I want to say that this, if there were some sort of a regulation or something set in place that anybody from stormwater could look at me and say, "Because of this, 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 and this, this condition is on here," then I would say, "Okay, first off, that hasn't been on any previous, you know, site plan that we've done in the last year and a half, or however long it's been." But if there's changes that have been made, thank you for letting me know about this. And from this point going forward, that allows me to go to my customers and separate myself even more and say, "Hey, look, you know, as your contractor on this structure, these other bids that you've got, have they told you that if you do this, 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 and this, that the county or the city is going to require you to do this sort of stormwater mitigation?" And that separates me, and I'm able to gain confidence in my customers, and they get a better product. There's no backend hidden fees, anything like that. So, I'm all for stuff like that. But to not have any sort of way to back up a condition, which is what Ryan or Nick weren't able to do, was to give me any sort of backup to the reason that they put that on, as a condition on the site plan, to me is just completely unacceptable. And now I'm 60 days into this, instead of the common 30 days with the architectural design, and I've got a customer that's got storage units that he can't fill up his building with, which is costing him extra money. I don't want to get into the hardcore details of all of my conversations, but I just want you guys to be aware of one of the comments that was made. One of the comments that was made was, "Maybe one, maybe two, maybe three trees might be acceptable." So, I think there's a much larger thing that needs to be hashed out that isn't for here, in which I've actually, just like I did with you guys with the ordinance changes with the architectural design, I offered in my assistance to say, "Hey, look, I want to help. If I can help you guys come up with these regulations..." You know, I'm not an engineer, don't claim to be an engineer, but I do know my business, and I know how it affects my customers and their properties and neighboring properties. If I can help you in any way, I'm going to offer my assistance. I'd love to help. And they actually took that and said, "Yeah, absolutely. That'd be something that we'd be interested in talking with you about." At the end of the day, I think that this condition is absolutely absurd, and I would request that you guys remove that condition before I move forward on this.
And I'll go ahead and mention that this condition of approval, after the discussion with Nick, should remain, but we would consider this satisfied, that it's met. We're working through the toolbox of stormwater control measures that can be used for these types of applications as it relates to the accessory structures. We'll have more information on what types of things, you know, up landscaping, rain gardens, and such when Ryan makes his presentation on the stormwater ordinance as requested next week, right at the work session. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So, in my conversations with Nick, and I'm not refuting anything you say, but I was trying to get a grasp on it too, because when it came through here, I thought, "This is a problem because of proximity to that creek back there, but how do they remedy it?" And so, when I asked Nick, and his conversation was originally with Ryan, he said that Ryan was making suggestions, but that it would be up to you to come and say, "This is what we're offering." And then they would approve it or not approve it. And they said that they didn't want anything, you know, like what you submitted for a plan, that would suffice, but that they could not draw it for you. It was just very simple for you to draw for them and turn it back in. Now, what you're saying, Erin, is new news, so I don't quite understand it.
Do you mind if I respond to that real quick?
Go ahead.
One of the recommendations that they gave me was essentially, "Build a concrete ditch that sent every piece of stormwater off of that building straight to the creek in a line," in which I responded, "Hey, I'm not an engineer, but if I take all the water off this building and put it in a ditch and send it right out of stream, that's the opposite of what we're trying to do. Let us dump this off on the backside of the building, let the natural grade of the property, which in the relation, the way that the building sits on this piece of property, every, every..." Well, there's not a topo there, but it all falls from that building through the customer's property, away from the building, back towards that stream. So, dump it out the backside of the building and let it sheet over grass. Like, I understand that it shoots through grass. That was like, that was one of the recommendations, or that they gave me. And I was, and at the end of it, Ryan was like, "Yeah, that's a poor recommendation."
Well, it may, it may sound like a poor recommendation, but like, I don't know the watershed there. I don't know where the concerns are.
Right.
I don't know what's low lying. I don't know what they're trying to keep the water off of. I don't know even which way the creek flows.
Yeah.
Whether it's collecting, you know, collecting there, or if it's, you know, upstream or whatever. But I know that it is a concern, and trying to, I mean, we're trying to account for all stormwater that's created in the community, and that does include when you build a building that creates more impervious surface. So, I don't think they're trying to be jerks. They're trying to navigate it. But I truly, Mr. Higginson, I truly don't understand where we are now with what you're saying about condition stands, but we're not going to uphold it?
No, I'm saying that the condition is satisfied. The condition should remain on there, but would be satisfied.
So, I guess my initial question would be, if the condition is satisfied and nothing changed from the first submittal to this one, how is it satisfied?
Well, and why is there?
If originally it wasn't?
Because based off the discussions that were had between last time and now.
It doesn't seem like it needs to remain a condition, then.
That's... We didn't change anything, by the way, on our submittal. Like, we didn't add any sort of stormwater mitigation or anything.
That's, I see where y'all are coming from on that, but for future accessory structures that are over the 800-square-foot threshold or things of that nature, this is going to be something that needs to be addressed with future...
I understand, I understand that. My initial question on that is, okay, if this is something that needs to be addressed, are they going to have something to follow, to address?
That's what he says they're working on.
But if we don't have that finalized, then how are we making people adhere to it?
And see, when this originally came, and I don't want to inquisition, Mr. Higginson, I try to be a little protective.
I don't want to either. I'm just saying, it shouldn't be a condition until that stuff's figured out.
Well, and when we, when this one was brought to us at the last meeting, my impression was, "This is different because of the proximity to the creek." Well, then when I talked to Nick about it, he's like, "Oh, no, we need to start considering all accessory structures." And I thought, "Okay." But I didn't realize that there wasn't guidance there to do that at this point. To me, it would be just like an existing, I mean, like a new structure on any property. I don't understand why it's that different. But I don't, I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot either, because I know that's not your area of focus, so...
Right, and that's what, when Ryan has a presentation on this, sometimes it's applied. If the, for instance, if it's a larger lot, and the ratio between impervious area and pervious area is within a certain range...
And we've seen a lot of that.
We have seen that. That's why there's no issue, but on certain cases, it applies. And what the toolbox would be, would be something like tree plantings, or rain gardens, or whatever. So, when this comes to us and we say, "Hey, you've got to do something to address stormwater," then here's a list of things that can be done for this.
So, I could see in this instance, us saying, "Because of proximity to the creek, you're going to have to either do this, 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 or this." Tell us what you want to do. But to say that, "Oh, this needs to be for every structure, but we don't know what it is yet," it's kind of expecting a lot.
And I wholeheartedly agree that there needs to be a process to follow. I just, I am not comfortable with a condition remaining that wasn't addressed originally and now is addressed with nothing changing. And like, I would rather have the process figured out that everyone's going to follow before the condition gets placed on an item. That's my opinion.
John, do you have something you wanted to say a minute ago?
Could you just say something as simple?
I didn't want to not, I didn't want to miss you.
Could you just say something as simple as that adverse effects be mitigated by the design of the building?
I, my opinion is the condition needs to be removed. And until we have something in writing for people to follow, because, I mean, take another municipality. So, Metro has an infill guidance for people to follow, and there are certain tiers that you have to follow. If you meet tier one, which is, I can't remember the square footage off the top of my head, but there are certain guidances that you have to follow for whatever tier you're in. And the tiers correlate to the amount of impervious area you're adding to the site.
Then that exists in our initial plan, and this just put pile on top of that. You see what I'm saying?
There's something in the stormwater ordinance that talks about that, but I can't quote that. Yeah, it... If I could jump in, I think, to the point, I think, I think we're having a conversation about a lot of things that are going to be on future projects that we're going to hear from Stormwater and Engineering at our March meeting. I've asked them to come give us a presentation to have more of this conversation. What I, what I don't want to see happen is this move forward with this condition, and then they go to get their final, or trying to get a building permit finished up, and it winds up, you know, maybe unintentionally. The intention may be that it not be a problem, but sometimes the unintended consequence...
Somebody's no longer here, and all of a sudden it becomes a problem.
And now he gets flagged, and then it causes all kinds of problems. So, you know, these conditions haven't been on similar structures. They're, engineering's saying it's satisfied. They're not asking for anything else. So, you know, so I'm going to make a motion to approve it, striking condition two. Condition two. Two. Striking condition two, so that we have clarity that they are indeed compliant.
I second it, because it's kind of hard to victimize them for something that we don't have to block and block yet.
Exactly. So, and I think that's, I think that's the way to do it, just so we have clarity for all departments, everybody involved, on how this moves forward.
Sorry, I was looking at the line.
Albert already did, but I appreciate it.
And just, I guess to add to the discussion, I'd like, a lot of municipalities in the Milledson City area and throughout the state are having to adhere to the new MS4 requirements for the state of Tennessee.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of changes going on, and a lot of guidances that are being reconsidered because of that. So, I can, I can see where the emphasis is on that. And I agree with it. I think there should be emphasis on that. But I think we need to figure it out more fully before we just place a condition on something.
I also don't want adverse effects on, on the property.
Correct.
Yeah, exactly. But it sounds like there's, stormwater engineering's working on a toolbox and better guidance to provide. As it relates to this project, I think this is the right, the right solution on this one, and we'll keep the conversation.
Do you think it's okay with just, as it is, it's not going to adversely impact anything? John?
I don't, and engineering's already, yeah, they're already saying they consider it satisfied.
That's true, that's true, sorry.
We're not asking, we're not asking for any change to happen. We're just clarifying it for the records.
Well, in the discussion, this may seem superfluous, but I want to go on the record and say that the approval of this condition striking the stormwater requirements in no way sets a precedent for how we handle future similar situations.
That's correct. So, all right. Any other questions or comments before I call for a vote? All those in favor of approval, striking condition two, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. All right, it's approved.
As well?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, thank you for that. I just, like I said, that gets me through this one. I think there's a much bigger thing that needs to be figured out, and whatever that...
Come or watch the next, our March work session meeting, because we're going to be, you know, talking about it specifically.
Can you speak at work sessions, or?
Yeah, if it's on the agenda. So, yes, you can speak at a work session.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to item six, Resolution 2025-015.
The owner and applicant is requesting approval of a final master development plan for a duplex on a 0.12 plus or minus acre lot, zoned MRO, multiple residential and office, located south of East Eastland Street and east of North Boyers Avenue. The applicant made a revision and submitted architecture that is 100% brick, which complies with our zoning ordinance requirements for architecture. The applicant would still be requesting a exception or a alternative landscape plan except for that. And there is still the question of the density for this duplex on this lot. And with that being said, the, or, planning staff recommend denial of Resolution 2025-015 due to the density not being consistent with our code requirement.
Do I have a representative for the applicant or the applicant themselves?
Jason Baggett, 2520 Iowa 25, Cotton Town, Tennessee. Got everything drawn up the way I thought everybody was happy with. We're still back to the size of the lot. That was known at the beginning when we bought the lot. Just needing the, that's the only thing we can't meet. As far as that buffering, three sides of this building, or this property has got a six-foot dog-eared fence, so it's got a complete buffered system all the way around. It's already installed. Not sure any other plants that would be acceptable. I'm really not sure what a Class 10 buffer system is, but I thought a fence was pretty, pretty buffered. Anything else that would you would like, I'd be happy to do. I just need to get, get past this one thing that I can't fix, and that's the size of the lot. It'll be, to be for two units, but I, there are multifamily up and down the street. It would fit imperfect in that neighborhood. It is zoned MRO.
John, we're still asking for exceptions on the landscape, on the buffer yards and the driveways. What are the exceptions that are being asked for, other than just the lot size? For variances, I guess, because...
So, full enforcement of the Type 10 buffer yard requirement would basically enough to fill up that whole side yard setback. And as the applicant said, there is, there is a fence going around all three. Opaque barriers can count towards the buffer yards in the zoning ordinance. And Julian, correct me if I'm wrong, but can... And Julian, correct me if I'm wrong, but can, I, I lost my train of thought on it, but can, can they totally be given as an alternative for buffer yards?
Is it a six-foot tall fence?
Yeah, I haven't put a tape measure, but it, it looks every bit of six-foot, yes.
A wood fence?
Yes, ma'am.
So potentially that could be considered for your landscaping buffer. The main issue from exceptions wise is the parking. The driveway is only allowed to be, I think, 24 feet wide for a residential driveway and having four parking spaces that back out directly onto the street is not typically a design pattern that we use anymore. Not to say there aren't that downtown. There definitely is, but that's not something that we do now. And by having four parking spaces, eight or nine feet wide, that's becoming a conflict right there. So that's the main issue is the backing out of the parking. I don't know if you want to elaborate on that, other than the density as well. They don't have enough square footage of a lot for two units.
Another exception that they would be asking for would be the zoning ordinance section that would require a sidewalk along the front as well. They're not showing one.
Which would conflict with their parking spaces they have shown? Or the sidewalk would go within the right of way?
Um, we typically have a five-foot grass strip. If it's a, if it's curved, a minimum five-foot grass strip, there's probably a, a small swale through there, so it could be wider than five feet. The way that this is shown, and I, I'm sorry, I can't measure it from, from here, there is space from those parking spaces to the road. They're not showing the parking spaces actually connecting to the street. So there could be a way that they could neck down for 24, but, you know, in all the duplexes that we've seen before, we try to limit the driveways to 24.
Remind me, the square footage requirement per unit, is it 3,000?
3,000 for MRO and this lot is.
Less than 5,000.
5,300. So it's supposed to be a 6,000 square foot lot for a duplex, which you could see how the parking has to be laid out. I mean, that's part of the reason that we have density requirements is that sometimes the lot just gets too small to fit everything you need. That might be the case here.
Yeah, I, we talked about it, the work session, you know, getting it compliant with everything else and then talking about the, the density piece of it. But there's no way to get this compliant with the buffer yards and the driveways and those things. So I mean, I, you know, I mean, I'm just one, one person with opinion, but I, I think this lot needs to be a single family home and not try to put a duplex on it.
I concur with that. We're just trying to fit too much under just too small a lot.
Yeah. So.
They'd also be putting a single family amongst a bunch of multifamily.
Maybe, but, you know, but at the end of the day, it's, you gotta, you gotta put something on the lot that works. And sometimes the lot's just not appropriate for somebody's use, but, but in this case, there are other uses that are available to the property owner that, that will work. It's just, I don't think it's this one.
Mayor, what if, what if it were a 3,500 square foot lot and the only way to use it would be a single family? It would be a single family in amidst a bunch of multifamilies. It's a postage stamp lot.
Have any comments, a motion? So staff, staff has recommended denial of this item. So this is, it's a little different than the previous item, which on, on the barn, which is they have, they have no choice but to recommend denial. But I very rarely see our planning staff come to us with a project and recommend that we deny it.
That's true.
To be honest with you, this is a very big duplex, bigger than anything I've ever built on duplex wise. I could get a smaller plan if, if we just need a little bit more room to get this driveway worked out. But I have no problem re, re, regaining a new plan. I just need to be able to know exactly what you want so I can make it fit. And I truthfully thought Mr. Rainey had straightened everything out before I came here tonight that he, he seemed to think this was going to be a, a over with, but I, obviously it's not. If we're, just tell me exactly what we need. Like I said, this, I'm not in love with this plan. It doesn't matter to me what I build as long as it's a duplex. I, this thing is huge. It's 2,500 square foot duplex, you know, it's, it's not exactly small. I can.
In 2,400, would you fit it better or?
I think, so there, there's, so staff can correct me wrong. There is no way to reduce the size of the duplex isn't the issue. It's the use of, it is the two-unit dwelling on the size of the lot. So, and.
Because of the lack of overall square footage for the site.
So, so that, that is impossible for them to correct. Now, he could build a, come back with a smaller unit and perhaps get parking, the buffer yards, the stormwater, a sidewalk and get all of those things to work. And, you know, and that's what, you know, the work sessions that we talked about, if they can make all those other things work compliant with the code, then we, then we would have a conversation about the, the lot exemption, but, but.
What, what, what are we thinking as we move into the new code related to accessory structures for secondary units? Because I know that's so the rage in some of the larger cities. I don't know how, what I feel like mother-in-law houses or tiny houses or whatever on existing home lots.
So, I mean, right now, the way that it's being contemplated is that the accessory dwelling unit would not count towards any additional density, even though it's an additional unit, because, because it's just a small unit.
Well, I asked that wondering if something like that could be an option where you would actually have ultimately two units, but it's not duplex. It's a home with an.
Could be an option. I mean, they would have to wait until.
The new code.
The new code comes through. So they'd have to wait for, you know, several months till, till we're through that process.
Would they have to be on the same utilities? Was that how that worked with the?
That is one of the defining features of it. So it's not going to be where you could sell off both of those units as.
Right, right. You can't, it doesn't split the property. It's one property with two units.
Right.
An accessory dwelling unit that's meant to be.
But if you're looking at it as investment property, it would give you a second investment property on the same.
This one's tough for me because, I mean, obviously, and I, some of y'all have sat in some of these, some of these classes that we've had at Tapa and things like that. I mean, there's definitely a housing crisis in the country from an attainability and affordability standpoint. So that's, it's, it's tough, but whenever we're talking about giving variances for multiple things at a time, that's to mimic what Matt was saying. That's, that's tough. And if you could, if you can meet the remaining requirements and fix the sidewalk, fix the driveway, if that means having a smaller unit, cool. But I, I just, it's really hard to give multiple variances at a time.
And I'll, I'll say it this way. It's, it's difficult to give multiple variances that ultimately allow a use that shouldn't, that wouldn't be there. So it's, it's, we're, we're being asked to give multiple variances to the code so that a townhouse can be built in a lot that doesn't meet the density requirements. So the only, does that make sense? So it's, we're, 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 we're accepting variances in order to grant a variance. Yes, please.
I also just want to stress that the 3,000 square feet per unit is necessary. I don't want to face the next applicant who comes in at a 5,800 square foot lot and ask why we approved this one and allowed two units on 5,400 square feet. That's kind of a hard number for me.
Assessment ability perspective, I'd, I'd like to see one single unit and then you have sidewalk space plus a driveway. I think it'd be a safety factor if you want with two.
It's like I said, there, there are, there are uses that are available for the piece of property that, that, that meet the code. So, so with that, I'm going to make a motion that we take staff's recommendation and deny the project.
I'll second.
A motion and a second for denial. Any further debate amongst commissioners or questions? Now, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. All right.
It's, it's.
I know that's pretty definitive, but just for clarification, because I hate giving up on a product. That's why I bought this lot and tore down the old, old house and all that, was to build a duplex. And I'm not planning on selling it. It was an investment for me. Before I make any changes, no way, no how, if I got a smaller plan and that all code requirements except the fact that it's, the lot can't never change, can't ever grow, it's going to be short, the 600 square feet, I guess, for, for two units. Would this get approved if I meet everything else?
Based on the conversation tonight, I would doubt it.
Did you understand the question I was asking?
Sort of, Mr. Brown. I didn't really understand why, if you've got a property that's a zone multifamily and you can meet everything that's required by the city who sets this up and everything is kosher, why you wouldn't be able to do it except for one, one, you know, that's why they make exceptions. I mean, that's why, why would they be able to sell this lot as a multifamily property if it's not actually a zone, or it's not an eligible multifamily lot? I mean, I don't understand why.
I don't know if we had gotten sound or something like that.
Listen, I'm going to stop this conversation. We've already voted on this item and I would encourage you to get with Ms. Ogden and the planning director. They can explain that to you, but, but we're, we're finished with this. Okay, item seven is resolution 2025-016, 129 Rose Avenue, final master development plan.
The owner and applicant requests approval of a final master development plan for two single-family detached residences on a 0.39 plus or minus acre lot, zoned as R6 High Density Residential, located west of North Water Avenue and south of West Albert Gallatin Avenue. The applicant would be requesting a couple of variances of this final master development plan, number one being the architecture. It does not meet the 70% brickstone requirement. However, it should be noted that there are other residential units on this street that also do not meet that requirement as well. The applicant is also requesting a variance on the lot width for the, for these two units. The R6 requires, I believe it's a 90-foot lot width as a whole. And these measure, or the distance itself right now is 85 feet, so 42.5 feet for each lot equates to a two and a half foot, two and a half foot gap on each lot that they wouldn't be able to meet that requirement. So they're requesting a two and a half foot variance for the lot width. The applicant is also requesting an alternative landscape plan for where the buffer yard requirement is for the R6, and I believe that's MRO on the southeast corner. But they are saying that the existing vegetation there can count as their landscaping plan. With that being said, Plan Department staff recommends approval of resolution 2025-016.
All right, thank you. Do you have a representative for the applicant?
Drew Ferguson, Greenland Design. We agree to all staff comments. We're requesting the three variances as Charlie stated with the lot width, the architecture and the buffer yard. So here to answer any questions.
Thanks for that. Actually, a quick question. In the, in that zoning, if they had put townhomes on this property, how many units could they have put on this? I mean, five or six probably?
Uh, yeah, I think it's 15, 15 per acre for R6.
Yeah, so.
I think we were like half acre, a little under half acre.
I believe it's 2,200 square feet per dwelling unit. Is that? 2,900.
Okay. No, thanks. I just was, was clarifying that. I, I had, I don't have any problem with these variances and I, I think having these be single-family lots platted this way is, is preferable over the density of a bunch of townhomes or having it on one. I don't, and the lots are plenty big. As you can see, they're, they're really deep. It's just a little bit on the width. So I don't, I don't have any problem with this.
I'm making motion to approve with all staff comments.
And a motion to approve from CJ.
I'll second.
Second from Mike Thompson.
I guess, discussion, that would obviously grant them the variances, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. I haven't seen nobody. Go ahead, John.
I just wanted to explain that I, I'm, I'm going to abstain from that vote because I just said that 3,000 square feet per lot was a hard line for me. And now we have a, a standard of how many feet, square, how many lineal feet of frontage per lot?
It's a 2,900 square feet per lot.
No, 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 not the 2,900 square feet. How much road frontage per lot is required?
45.
45. I just said a hard number was a hard number and, and I just.
I guess to, I guess to just add to discussion.
I'm not going to vote no.
I, I know. And, and just to add to it, I guess provide clarity. In my opinion, this is a completely different ask than the one that was previous because they could come up with a different plan and get three times the amount of units on this site.
I know. That's why I've heartburn over, but no.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the other one's the, is the opposite. It's.
Correct.
It's suitable for a single and they're trying to put doubles, but.
Okay.
I'm not arguing against it.
Okay, okay.
I, I understand. So, all right. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions?
One abstained.
One abstained. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That is it for the regular agenda. Any other business from staff? I don't have any myself tonight.
Reminder that the Tapa Spring Retreat is coming up on March 17th and 18th. That's a Monday and Tuesday on your calendars. I do not have the schedule yet for what sessions they will be doing on those two days. So I, I can't give you guidance on if you wanted to go to one day or the other in order to make sure you get the legislative update or whatever courses you may be interested in. But I will send that along as soon as I have it.
Is it here?
It's, it's.
Montgomery Bell.
Montgomery Bell State Park, so it's in Dixon.
Yeah.
Area. It's about an hour drive. We are not going to do hotel stays for that reason since it's within driving distance, fair, fair driving distance. But we will accommodate anybody who wants to go both days in that manner.
Did you find out, are they going to livestream?
Livestream, I don't believe so. I will double check on that.
Please do, because especially with the legislative updates, I just can't go there, but I could watch 80% of that day livestream.
Thanks. Anything else? All right, that's it. Got one more motion that I'm looking for.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? I've got a second. All those favor going home, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.